Kathleen, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Dickerson.
Here.
Commissioner Mohajer.
Here.
Chair Seifert.
Here. At this time, we need to approve the minutes from the February 1st meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Dana, we're going to start our public comment period. Would you like to explain the Zoom portion?
Yes, thank you Chair Seifert and good evening Commissioners. This is Dana, ED Planning Division Manager. And if you wish to comment on an agenda item and you are on Zoom, please use the raised hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you are recognized, you will then be unmuted and allowed to comment on the business at hand in the order received. The maximum comment time is three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. And if you are calling in on Zoom and you wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by dialing star nine and then identify yourself when unmuted. Thanks.
Thank you Dana. At this time, we'll enter the public comment period here. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience in each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. Is this later? It's for an item. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we're going to proceed to public hearings.
And I don't have any hands raised on Zoom either, so no comments.
Perfect, thank you. Item number one is the Heritage Walk Lofts Downtown Permit 201 Town Center West. Do we have an ex parte from the Commissioners?
Yes, I've spoken to several people at the Vernon Group.
Anyone else? I have not either. At this time, can we have a staff presentation?
Thank you Chair Seifert. My name is Carol Zizinhenny. I'm the Senior Planner presenting the project this evening. So this is an application by the Vernon Group to remodel an existing 85,900 square foot two-story building formerly occupied by the Fallist Department Store to include 104 loft-style rental apartment units. This project was previously reviewed by, last year, by the Downtown Revitalization Committee and was briefly discussed at the special meeting of the City Council, Planning Commission, and Downtown Revitalization Committee in December of last year, 2022. So the building is within the Town Center West Shopping Center. That includes the Santa Maria Gastroenterology and First United Methodist Church to the south. So this is the church, this is gastroenterology, this is the project site. Multi-tenant commercial and office buildings are to the north, including Boot Barn right over here and Maya Restaurant, which is in this building right off of Heritage Walk. And the remainder of the Town Center West to the west, southwest. Santa Maria Town Center is just to the east, the Santa Maria Mall, across South Broadway. The downtown-specific plan identifies the project location as a major corridor of the downtown. Since the project is over 10,000 square feet in size, a downtown permit that is reviewed by both the Planning Commission for recommendation to city and then City Council for final determination. The 1.3 acre site is located at 201 Town Center West. East was on the subject slide, in the Town Center District of the downtown. The Town Center District is identified as a central location for drawing people to the downtown core through a mix of uses focused on entertainment, living, shopping, recreation, culture, civic use, and employment. This is considered a redevelopment project in the specific plan and are encouraged, and developments are encouraged through incentives like flexibility in design standards and reduced fees. So this is a view of the Fallist, the building when it was occupied by the former tenant. The building was previously occupied by Mervyn's for 20 years until 2008. Fallist Department Stores opened in this building in 2013 and closed just last year in 2022. This is a view from the kind of the main drive aisle. This is looking at the southeast corner of the building. Here's another view looking across from the theater or Red Robin. This is again a view from the, looking kind of north, northwest. This is the largest freestanding retail building in the downtown. It's two stories and it's approximately 42 feet tall today. Two building frontages face Broadway and the building is surrounded by city-owned parking lots. So as I mentioned before, the building is 85, about close to 86,000 square feet. The applicant proposes to remodel the building to construct 104 residential loft-style units. These are market rate units. The, there are 98 units that are proposed to be studio lofts with sleeping lofts. And then six are proposed as one-bedroom, also with a sleeping loft. So there's two sleeping areas. The lofts would have 18-foot tall ceilings left over from the retail commercial use, which grant a lot of flexibility to reuse the space. The project is also, provides amenities for the residents, including a rooftop deck, landscaped open courtyard with shade-loving plants and trees, private patios or decks, community rooms, and multiple secure bike storage rooms on each floor. There are also elevators provided in the building. Per the downtown-specific plan, 97 parking spaces are required based on the unit size. So just on the, on the top left here of the screen, this, this shows the parking requirements. It's based on unit size and you can see the breakdown here. On the right of this table are what the project proposes and the parking spaces that they are required to provide. So the project is proposed to be located within an adjacent city-owned parking lots that have historically provided parking for the retail commercial uses that were in the building. The project site falls within Zone A of the Parking Incentives Zone Map on the bottom left here in the dark blue. So the downtown-specific plan allows the project to use the shared parking lot in this case. Shown in the slide, there are 679 parking spaces total surrounding the building in these three parking areas. And there's some just across from the Community Development Building over here. There were some concerns raised from the community members regarding parking conflicts with both the First United Methodist Church to the south and the medical office also in that vicinity. In response, a condition has been added to encourage resident parking to the areas in the north nearest to the entry plaza shown here. I'll get into the floor plan a little bit later, but there's, this is the entry plaza. So parking would be, until Lot 1 develops, would be limited to this area as part of a condition. And this would be specified in a contractual agreement with the city for the use of, and ongoing maintenance of the lots used by the project. The applicant has also provided secure bike parking on each floor and improvements to the transit stop on Broadway. So there's a bus stop just to the north of that elevated pedestrian bridge. So the project qualifies for incentives per the downtown-specific plan. Since this project has met a majority of the development standards that are feasible for this type of projects, residential, the side, and the size of the site, the applicant has qualified for the incentives on the slide. So this includes reduced building permit fees up to 50%, but not including cost for third-party permit plan check review, authorization for future downtown permits onsite to be administrative when otherwise a hearing would be required. So this would be at the discretion of the zoning administrator. Payment of growth mitigation fees by a plan over 10 years without interest payments. That's based on municipal code and subject to approval by a city attorney. And then the last two are reduced subdivision and lieu fees. So these are based on the 2016 fee rates rather than the 2023 or 2022 fee rates. And then last but not least, there's the contractual use of those parking facilities we've mentioned in the previous slide. So staff has reviewed these incentives and recommend that they be approved for the project. So this is another view of the building. This is on the north side of the future and showing the future location of the courtyard in the middle here. This is looking as if you're looking from Maya Restaurant or Heritage Walk, looking south. This is a perspective rendering of the proposed building. The grand entry pasillo, which is to be landscaped and leads into the interior of the building. So just on, draw your attention to this is where the, that pasillo is located. This is where you'd be standing, looking on. The center of the building is open to the sky. It's a, again, going to be landscaped with trees and plants, seating areas. The entry plaza is strategically placed to be visible from Main and Broadway, also Heritage Walk and Lincoln Street. This creates some pedestrian interest and is a focal point for the building. Just also wanted to point out, just to the left, there is a underutilized public plaza over here and that would also draw some pedestrian activity. So this is a view of the ground floor plan. There are 47 lofts and three one-bedroom lofts with the sleeping loft, so two sleeping areas. The center courtyard design allows for both the exterior units surrounding the outside of the building as well as the interior units to have private outdoor amenities that either face the street, the parking areas, or the shared courtyard inside. Again, it's open to the, to the sky, so you get some sunlight there. The ground floor has two common rooms, right here and right here. There is a freight elevator kind of by the old loading bays. This is where the trash enclosures are proposed. And then there's one more elevator right over here by one of the entries that's closer to Broadway. The grand entry plaza is kind of highlighted in this gray area and there are two stairwells that go up. There are bike storage locations on each side, two of them. And then a shared laundry facility. These are the common areas, I think I mentioned those before. And so for residents living on the second floor, they, they don't have to carry their bike upstairs. They have an elevator they can utilize and then they can store them in two additional bike storage rooms that would be available to the residents. Additional laundry on the second floor, a common room, and those elevators I'd mentioned. So these are, this, this is the second floor on the right. 51 lofts, three one-bedroom sleeping lofts. And then on, on the left is something that's real unique to the project. It's a 7,300 square foot community roof deck. That's to include planters with trees, ornamental planting, seating, portable fire pits, and then two additional private roof decks for the lofts on the second floor. And the trees proposed, I'll get into it a little bit later. They are California native trees. These are the floor plants. They're mostly one-bedroom sleeping loft-style. So most of the units will be the, the units on the left. There's the living area on the ground floor with a half bath. And then going upstairs, there's a full bath with a closet and a sleeping loft. So as I'd mentioned prior, there, these are 18-foot tall ceilings. So you can get, maximize the space, create a good, a good living experience. The average unit size are approximately 680 square feet, but the larger units are upwards of 1,350 square feet. Again, each unit will be provided with their own private outdoor space. So I just wanted to touch really briefly, it's only six units, but there is a bedroom here, living area with a full bath. And then there's a kind of an open area to below with another sleeping loft, another full bath, closet, and a study area on the loft floor. So this is, this is a section as if you'd cut the building in half like a cake. You can see it's kind of a donut shape. There's two stories, two units stacked on top of each other. And then there's this loft area where it, it kind of stops and it's open to below. It creates an open living environment. The ceiling heights for the loft are between 10 and 8 feet tall. And then the, the building is proposed to be raised just a little bit in height to accommodate the elevator penthouse and mechanical screens, up to 52 feet in height, but that's well within the downtown-specific plan requirement of 70 feet. And so one more thing I'd just like to add, these, this loft's design does, provides some openness with the large modern storefront windows that the applicant is proposing with this design. So the downtown-specific plan encourages development to have their own identity and provide attractive pedestrian-scale articulation. The building has its own identity by incorporating contemporary architectural elements like the large storefront windows that really open up the units to the surroundings. Black metal fascia elements on the roof, but throughout there are references to the Spanish missionary style to integrate with the surrounding town center buildings, the church, city hall, the, the rest of the downtown. The applicant can speak more to the, to this themselves. They're here in the chambers this evening. But they've indicated this project is intended to be rooted in the Spanish eclectic, but also utilize modern detailing and articulation. For example, the white stucco with decorative ornate wrought iron accents, the arches, the arcades, recessed entries, like you can see here. They all are representative of the classic Mediterranean architecture, but the, the windows and roofline are reflective of today's building standards, the more modern aesthetic. So there's stucco, metal roofing, wood, cement, wood, wood look, but also with these ornate wrought iron accents and decorative illumination light fixtures. So the, I'll just go through these really briefly. These are the elevations. On the bottom left, you can see, just to orient yourself, this is facing south, southeast. So this will be facing towards City Hall and Cook Street. And then this will be facing the Frontier Utility Building on the opposite side. So this will be where the trash enclosures are proposed and, and facing that, that public courtyard over here. Lincoln Street is just to the, to the north. Again, the, the building does meet the city standard for 70-foot height maximum. They're at 52 feet. And then this is the grand entry. It's in Tootie. I think the perspective showed a little bit more of the detailing, but this is the, the arches. Number one is on the top here. And then number two would be facing Rite Aid and, and the Town Center West shops, facing closer to Cook Street and Lincoln Street, that driveway. And the palm trees are for illustration only. They're proposed to be removed with this project. So this is the landscape concept plan. I'd mentioned before, palm trees are proposed to be removed and replaced with shade trees, which provides additional pedestrian amenities, shade while you're, you're walking downtown. Again, there are private patios and balconies that face both inward and outward with trees planted in the courtyard. So on the left is the ground floor. Bloodgood Japanese maple, so a bright red tree are proposed on the inside, which do well with shade and partial sun. And then on the right is the roof deck, which have California native trees. Both have, both of these trees have leaves year-round. And then the street trees are proposed along where the existing palm trees are. And those are crepe myrtles, which are approved, street, they're approved by the city as street trees for, and they're flowering deciduous. So Recreation and Parks staff have reviewed the street tree choices shown on the concept landscape plans and have approved them. They would be compatible with the surrounding parking lot trees. They're with bronze loquats, redwood ash, sweet bay, and purple robe locusts. A couple of these trees are not actually proposed. The western red bud are not, but within the courtyard, there are shade-loving plants, ferns, other low-water-use grasses are also proposed. On the right-hand side, the applicant can touch on this more thoroughly, but these are the amenities that are, that you can expect to see on, in the courtyard and rooftop deck. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission by motion, recommend that the City Council approve downtown permit DT 2022-0011. Staff is available for questions as is the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from Commissioners? I don't see any. Can we have the applicant presentation?
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly, Scott Martin, architect with RRM Design Group. We're headquarters out of San Luis Obispo. Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. Chair, thank you. Excited to be back in front of some of you with this and first in front for others. So really appreciate one of what I think is one of the most unique projects we've had the pleasure of work on in quite some time. So I hope I don't go too far, but I'd love to tell you a little bit of the story, how we got to where we are, a lot of the why. And then we can talk after that a bit about the who or the, the how as we, we go. I just briefly want to touch upon the site overview. Staff, I think, did a fabulous job, so I'll probably cruise through that a little bit fast. Downtown-specific plan conformance, circulation and parking, building design, our landscape concept. And then of course, we're here for any questions. I've got myself and applicant team, so I think between, between everybody here, we could answer just about anything that may come up. Don't want to guarantee it, though I know you guys can throw curveballs. I don't know if I can actually point on the screen, but I, I'll talk on my hands at least. I apologize, it was, it was quite a challenge. Somebody put this building on a 45-degree axis in the middle of a downtown grid. And so our plans are either true north or at this 45 orientation. And it's caused even our own drafting staff quite, quite, quite a headache. I will, I just wanted to briefly sort of walk through this to add on. This is an internal commercial building, which we're struggling with perfect commercial on the corner of the most busy intersection and getting viability in today's world of Amazon and shipping and fast grab. This is a big box store buried in the middle of a site. And I think what we've seen in the past decade-plus is that an adaptive reuse of what those big box stores were is definitely coming. What they become is exciting. I, I gotta tell you, I've done a couple of these now, more focused on storage and creating storage units in the heart of, heart of a retail center. Really excited about the use change as this adaptation happens to this building. And hopefully we can, we'll get into that a little bit more. You have a guiding document that, that acted as our sort of roadmap for, for what we propose on this project and other projects in the area. And that first and foremost starts with diversity. I drove by the site before I came in here and it's pretty dark. It's pretty desolate. The after-five o'clock crowd is, is a challenge in this area and in a lot of downtown. And so I think what this does first and foremost is it allows for high-density residential, integrated housing with your retail centers. And that is customers, that is people that are eyes on the street and activity from a time after 5:00 PM. So really looking forward to sort of meeting some of those specific plan goals and embodying some of the, the vision that, that happens there. Again, staff did a great job sort of talking about bike parking and the bus stop that's nearby, vehicular travel. We, we took, we took a bit of an interesting approach and I'll explain the courtyard a little bit more. But this is a big box and we were trying to put residential units in it. It's a big box with three or four windows. I apologize that. Every residential unit needs a window in their bedroom and living room. So we scratched our heads for a while with what to do here. What we did like is the location and the synergy of what still is good bones, if you will. I think we've all heard that term before. Those are great bones. The structure of this building is in rather good shape. It's actually a red iron building. For those of you don't know, that means there's, there's big steel columns in there and that's what's providing the structural support. You basically could rip off the walls of this building and still have a skeletal remains. And that's a lot of what we're looking at here in order to, to make this function in a, in a reuse purpose. We need windows. We need light and air and ventilation. And the structure is what's guiding most of that along our decision-making process. So we looked at the structural grid and followed it to provide a center courtyard, which doubled the amount of potential light that we could bring into the building. And then we looked at which corner we might be able to peel away in a way that would allow pedestrian penetration, transparency, and pedestrian access into the project. There's a lot more than the four windows that exist now today. What, what we're proposing is a much more humanistic project. I just want to quickly, that is literally a before and after. The one thing that is really bad about the Fallist photo is I don't have a person, but it is an overwhelming scale of this project compared to the human being, which is, which is the exact opposite of what the downtown-specific plan has in mind. So really looking at ways where we could articulate down, use the human figure and a proportionality of people to create living space, yet still maintain structure. So it's the yet that gets, gets quite hard. You can see that there are columns in place. There are, there is an existing wall line we are trying to keep. So as I continue to go back and forth between these photos, we're trying to maintain all of that. So you can ask all kinds of great questions about unit size and why. That is the why. It is all based on a structural modulation and making sure that we're maintaining grid beams and, and horizontal members as well as vertical members. I think staff mentioned it, you know, we, we've talked a bit about architecture in the study session and other places. I think there is a identity that is Santa Maria. This building, I don't really think embodied that now and I think has an opportunity to reference some of the historic precedents that are in town, whether it be the church, whether it be this build, this beautiful building that we're in today, without diluting them by trying to copy them. So again, that, that was our architectural philosophy, is that we want to reference buildings and pay homage and, and relate back, but not try to copy. That, that, that would do nothing to, to create justice for the buildings that are here. We are looking for that Mediterranean style and I, and I hope when everybody looks at this, that's clear and foremost. However, through some creative detailing, through adding some of those humanistic elements, we're looking to bring it back down a little more horizontal in nature, some warmth and, and additional materials like the wood along the balconies and railings. It hearkens back to that sort of biophilia or that connection to nature. It's one thing that's lacking in a sea of asphalt is any sort of connection to nature. So we really did want to try to introduce that. I apologize that some of the graphics still have the palm trees. That was a dream before we got the landscape architect involved. But we, and we've been, we've been working, like I said, we've been working on this for a while. So the rendering on the right, this show, a little bit more accurate portrayal of true street trees. We're really trying to focus on what is currently a driveway and creating a better public realm around there, an urban interface between residential units and vehicular traffic. From a materiality standpoint, we do think, still think stucco is appropriate. We're rooted in that, that white Spanish stucco, but adding some, some contrast, some higher contrast, still picking up on the wrought iron and some of the, the classic light fixtures and architectural detailing as you go out the, throughout the project. We were asked to look at tile roof. We've got some structural challenges. Again, throwing a bunch of weight, that's what tile roof nowadays is all made out of concrete. Throwing a bunch of weight on top of existing structure starts to be a bit of a challenge. There is a couple areas where we were able to look at that and do that. That's where the roof deck is centered and some of that outdoor space. Currently, we're proposing, like the photo on the right, a terracotta top to some of the, the wall railings. So like those garden walls and the patio wall, we have some of the same thing proposed for some of the balconies and patio walls in our project, is that it would be capped with more of a terracotta look. Again, it's paying homage without trying to, to literally copy. I think staff did a I think staff did a good job with the floor plans and sort of talking about that. I do want to place a little bit of emphasis on common space. I think it's important in a residential project of this size. I know most of the projects you see that get close to 100 units or have a clubhouse and a pool, this is an urban interpretation of that, and I think we gotta be really cognizant of the target market, the who, if you will. This is the kind of place where somebody starting out young in their career, working for the city, might be looking for an apartment and have a different lifestyle than the three-bedroom, two-bath home with the white picket fence. This is definitely a need. It's a demographic that has been seen. The other thing we've seen is actually seniors moving back into downtowns where they can have smaller space, less yard to maintain, walkable abilities to services and goods. So, the units are smaller than a typical home and targeted at a market that wants to be where people are and where services are and where you can go out to eat at night. So, we're excited about bringing that sort of product to a spot where it really belongs, which is the heart of town. The landscape concept was talked about a little bit. I do think, you know, an internalized, we always look at outdoor space and common space as sort of some hierarchy. There should be, you know, a public entry, a public transition. There should be some semi-public, semi-private space where you can hang out with your neighbor, where you can share a meal maybe with somebody else in the complex, but you wouldn't feel like anybody off the street could walk in. And then you should have your own private space, the kind of thing where you can walk out on your balcony and have a cup of coffee in the morning and read a book, but feel secluded. There's quite a bit of wind out here, and in this in particular graphic, most of that wind is coming from page upper right. So, that's where we actually chose our entry. We think that people are also coming that direction for the, until some other redevelopment happens, we wanted to hide the interior courtyard so that it would be sheltered from that wind. But it's also the face of the building that has the fewest amount of balconies and decks for some of that private outdoor space. Contrarily, when you get up to that roof deck, I think it's going to be absolutely beautiful. You'll see sunsets, and there's a railing provided with some greenery and screening to make sure that you're sheltered from some of that, adding fire pits and et cetera. So, we're here for, looking for feedback tonight and excited about, I think we've heard a lot along the way of this project. We're excited about getting across the finish line and bringing the vision of what the downtown specific plan had to your downtown. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Commissioners? Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, Chair, thank you. So, question on the parking, maybe the question for staff is, the parking that's being provided, is that going to be kind of in perpetuity if there is a redevelopment of the rest of the properties there? Is there some commitment that the city has to make to maintaining that level of parking for this development in the future?
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. So, the conditions of approval currently call for a contractual agreement with the applicant, between the applicant and the city. So, in the event, you know, the redevelopment, the broader picture of redeveloping downtown, that can be taken into account. I don't have any details as of yet because that's going to be something that the city will be working on. The, kind of the philosophy behind the downtown is that there'd be shared parking areas provided by these city-owned lots. In addition, I believe there are some plans to incorporate additional parking in areas where they are proposed to be redeveloped as well. So, as, looking forward with the state's plan to move towards transit and provide additional multimodal forms of transportation, yes, there may be provision in the contract to provide permanent parking. Also, there's the hope that there would be some pedestrian access to access services as well as ride your bike, ride your bike to the bus, walk to the bus, take the bus, et cetera.
I just, you know, there's plenty of parking there, obviously, now for empty buildings, and just curious, you know, in the future, how that might fit in with an overall master plan for that entire area, right? I mean, I know it's looking into a crystal ball a little bit, but that's, you know, something I think worth thinking about, obviously, so.
I was just going to add on that, so, the area that Carol called out in the presentation where we would have the parking, the 97 spaces, there's actually more than that in that location. It's the, well, she can bring up the slide, but it's that area that's shown, says 376 spaces. So, for the time being, until that lot ever potentially develops in the future, that's where this parking would occur. If lot one, that is considered lot one in the overall redevelopment concept. Once that redevelops, then the, my understanding is the agreement between the property owner and the city would need to be amended to show where the parking would be located in other areas. The proposal, it's not on the agenda tonight, so we can't get into too much detail, but the proposal for lot one does have parking proposed, I think, on the ground floor of the building. So, like you were mentioning, some of the other redevelopments in the area do have parking included with them that would serve that building.
Great, thank you. One other question, each unit has its own private outdoor patio or area, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, due to the design of the building, let me see if I can pull up the landscape plans. It's a little hard to see, but they're around the outside. These are ground floor, private patio areas with bark mulch, and then on the outside, there are proposed patios and balconies as well. Let's see if I can pull something up. So, this is, the elevation show, this would be one of those balconies there with a patio beneath with the wood demarcating each individual outdoor space. So, this might actually be another balcony as well. I'm not entirely sure, maybe the...
That is, that is. It's either hidden behind the white arch or in the spanning element between the white arches. And again, on the ground floor, even providing some of that demarcation, that just helped delineate residential space versus public walking area. So, the ground floors do have patios on all sides, yep.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Dickerson?
While the rooftop is being shown here, I guess I have a question about how you're going to, what you're going to do to fight the wind. Because I don't know how tall a barrier you're going to be able to put on that northwest side, but anyway, so what's your concept?
Chair, so now the actual, there's already a parapet, so the roof stops and then the edge of the building continues on up, and that'll act as a pretty natural, nice wind break now. If you go back to plan just for a second, well, you can kind of see it here, that's also where we're bringing stairs and elevator towers up. I think staff talked about, there's portions of the building that will need to be extended. That has to do with new building code and everything else. But if you go back to the plan, you can see that actually hugging towards the interior courtyard is where the most of the space is. Then the elevators to the upper left and the stair tower, that's going to provide the majority of what blocks. When it swings to be a little more northerly than westerly, and we see that throughout the day, that structure, again, has that roof element coming up. So, you know, it's not, there's not a lot of roof decks in Santa Maria. I think it's going to be an amazing space. Climatically, we're going to have to work on controlling that, and that was part of the idea with fire pits and whatnot as well. So, the structure itself wasn't deemed to come up and close off all the views and those sorts of things. So, we kind of, we're hoping that the railing and the natural barriers of the building itself will help provide that.
Because, I mean, I'm assuming that, I mean, the further you get to the interior of the building, the more the wind has made its way, yep, up and over.
Up and over, absolutely.
And of course, the higher, the higher the, the higher the wall is or whatever it is you're going to have for, on that west side, that northwest side, the more it's going to block those lovely sunsets that you're selling, so.
The view back out. Balance.
There you are. Okay, just a quick, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is that everything from the commissioners? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for staff. What were some of the incentives for the downtown permitting that would only go in front of the ZA? Could you give us an example of what something like that might be?
So, what, the requirements to basically qualify for an incentive?
What kind of downtown permit would be able to be asked for that would be determined by the zoning administrator?
Oh, oh, yes, I see. That's a good question. Based on this project, I mean, if there were minor changes to the building, say one of the balconies needed to be changed or something like that, that would be up to the discretion of the zoning administrator, and it could be made at an administrative level. So, sometimes during construction process, changes need to be made. That would be an example. In commercial settings, if there's a change in tenant, for example, with the gateway mixed-use, just up on the northwest side of Main and Broadway, typically, we would see, we get a downtown permit for every new business license that comes in. Those are usually a zoning administrator, but if, for example, there were a project large enough, floor area large enough that would typically require planning commission approval, it would be able to be done at an administrative level.
Okay. And also, I had a question for the architect. So, I was looking at the rooftop plan. It seems like on the northwest side, it's, you have your parapet and straight down, where on some of the other sides, there's a setback from, is that accurate?
Yeah. Could we bring the plan back up and just make sure that we're both talking about the same side? The northwest does have, it is currently more of a loading area. There is not the existing structure out there. So, that entire elevation that is currently page up, top of page, that entire side doesn't have all of the same structural abutments or the columns, that colonnade that are out. So, it's a little tighter along there, and we still provide some patios and some balconies, but it didn't have the same depth as the rest. So, it is relatively a flush wall, especially as you get, there you go, you can see it down that way. So, does that answer Commissioner's question? I think it's a valid one.
Yeah, no, I was just, because it looks like some of them are stepped back, and I get what you're saying. And then my other question was, is that staircase, is that emergency only, the one that comes from the roof deck?
No, it's required once you're over 1,000 square feet that you have two staircases provided in case there's a fire on one side, you can go to the other. So, we are trying to reuse that stairwell that you see on that side. The other one would be a new addition, and that's what the purpose of sort of putting them on both sides is.
Okay. And then my last, sorry, my last question was, the trash enclosure. I know you guys showed the specific, I'm sorry, the standard plan on sheet, A11, and I don't know if you can put that up, Carol, A11 of the RRM plan?
Unfortunately, I don't have that image, but I can talk about it.
Yeah.
It shows that our typical plan, and Mark might be able to explain this better, has an apron that goes out about 13 feet.
Sure.
And it looks like it goes beyond the property line. Is that something the city's going to maintain, or is that something the developer will maintain?
So, all great questions. The property line gets a little fuzzy on this building. It's, we're having some negotiations with that right now. That is currently the loading dock. So, where we're placing that, there is already a concrete apron or a concrete drivable surface. How about that? Apron, no. We're going to need to flatten some of that, and then we're going to have to work with Public Works as we go through the construction document phase to say exactly how far out that goes. So, it may be that the existing surface still functions for most of their truck work, but the area right in front of the gates to guarantee for swing and everything will have to probably be modified.
Thank you.
I have another question. Yeah, I have another question, and I know that we're not dealing with the rest of the properties and the rest of the project tonight, but I am curious, do you see the architecture of this building fitting with the past presentations we got, which has more of an Italian kind of piazza look? Or, once this one's set in stone, so to speak, that it's going to morph all the other things and that's in the past?
Commissioner, I feel like you're trying to get me to walk over a trap door with that question, that I'm a little hesitant to...
It's a small trap door, though. It's very, it's a very nice trap door.
I'm going to get back to the fact that I think buildings in downtown, as the specific plan calls out, should have their own unique identity, and that this is derived of place but with its own unique identity still. Each building that does come forth in the larger development, that I continue to look for great dialogue with you all, will also take on a slight variation of that at least. So, I don't think this will set a precedent, if that's what you're asking, for how the architecture moves forward. I think it's hard not to think about all the other buildings, but really trying, there are some unique circumstances, especially about this building being adaptive reuse, that make maybe implementing some of what we talked about in the study session a little harder. I hope that didn't totally avoid it, but didn't get me in that trap either.
No, it was a nice dance, thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. This is actually going back to the parking spaces. Is there going to be some type of earmark to differentiate the residential parking spaces to the availability of the business parking spaces? Just to kind of give everyone a heads up to what the designations are.
So, that will be decided by the contract. My understanding thus far is that the spaces will be made available for the use of the residents, but it would still be open parking, shared with the rest of the community. The details of that would be, I think, fleshed out with the city attorney and the applicant.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. Like Commissioner Dickerson, had a little smile on my face when I saw your elevation. We had quite a nice discussion about the downtown and the different colors and renderings and the different styles of buildings. I actually, I think I like this building. The building that is there is not a very good-looking building, as you said, and redoing it, it seems like quite a colossal feat. And what you've done here is going to be different from what we have. We talked about, I think the mayor wanted to keep a little bit more of the entrada program in play with the Spanish style. I'm guessing that's where the terracotta, I mean, you showed us the Spanish style on the thing, but you didn't really, I mean, that's not really what we have.
Yeah.
So, you might want to continue thinking about that a little bit.
Commissioner, if I may just address that slightly, I do want to reiterate that, hopefully, when the greater downtown has redeveloped, this will be very internalized from a project standpoint. And like I said, I think there are some constraints that come along with the adaptive reuse. We continue to have that dialogue about, you know, if it is the entrada program, where is that best embodied and represented and not just copied everywhere? And this being the internal location was not deemed, well, nothing is set in stone yet, but to maybe highlight that sort of style more on the prominent corners than on the internal projects.
Let's see. I'm glad you have windows in all the units, that was my first concern.
Yes.
So, thank you very much for that. That's very unique, the way you did the courtyard and managed to get that in. I think that's super important. I don't have any problem with the height. I do have a few questions as just far as heat and cooling, 18-foot ceilings, all multiple units. What do you, I mean, my bills just tripled.
What happened in January?
I don't know.
It was insane.
We're talking gas and, and electric, so, and of course, gas is now a toxic substance, we're, we're eliminating it, so I guess we're thinking about electricity. What, what's your thoughts on this as a designer?
Wow.
And how are you going to do that?
Great question, and, and really leads to more than just this project, but, but sort of a, a California trend, if you will. So recently adopted, um, uh, just this year is a new building code, which is pretty much driving, not absolutely, but pretty much driving any standalone residential project to be 100% electric. Gas is a thing of the past, if you will, is, toxic may not be the right word. Some of us still love cooking on a gas stove, uh, but we better get used to induction, because more and more electricity is coming. As a result, in our climate zone, and, and the heating and cooling that we're trying to provide, most often, units of this size especially, are ending, ending up with what's called a mini-split. I don't know if everybody's familiar with that. You're getting into tech, technology that's, but what you'll see, usually on a balcony, that's where, or on a roof, depending on what level you're at, is, they call them a magazine or a briefcase, and they're a little uglier than a briefcase, so often we try to screen them behind either some vegetation or, um, on, on an actual balcony, but literally...
Did you have a location for that already on the roof? I didn't see that.
The, the, we're trying, again, we're trying to get as many as we can up on the roof and find a chase down. Some of the ground floors will probably be on the patio. At this level of design, we're not quite there yet. We're still trying to make sure the building doesn't fall down and rip the walls off.
That's good.
But the, the idea is rooftop for all of the second floor, and any of the ones that we can chase down to the, to the lower level. Uh, the nice thing is, they're pretty quiet, they're very efficient, um, and gives a lot of user, usability control, so.
Yeah, I'm not a huge fan. Uh, I, I have one in my office, uh, but it is the way of the future, it seems like. Going to staff, Commissioner Mahajir had asked about parking, and there is something in the conditions of approval about monitoring, and I don't think we have any type of those programs in place right now. Uh, I, I'm not thinking it's going to be a huge problem for a while, but I know that our neighbors are, they've, they've been to our study sessions, they're concerned.
Yeah.
So how is that going to be done? Is that going to be done through the city? Is it going to be done through the applicant? How, how does that work exactly, just for, for our neighbors? How, how, what's that going to look like?
So I foresee this being, um, just a, a, a collaboration amongst, um, both the city, the applicant, and, and the neighbors as well. Um, there has been historical use of the parking area, city-owned parking lot, for these uses, both the medical office and, and the church. So I've, I've, um, did get, received contact from a, a member of the First Methodist Church, and I'm looking into parking requirements, what's needed, um, and what's needed for this project as well. So it'd be a close collaboration.
Great. So, yeah, we, we just really need to make sure that the, the people that are already there are taken care of, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I think I saw in the conditions that we recently viewed a high-tech bus stop. Uh, that's, that's what's proposed for this area? Is that, uh, something that the applicant is putting in, or is the city? How, how does that work? Who, who, who's paying for that?
So Chair Seifert, members of the commission, Principal Civil, Mark Mueller with the Public Works Department. The bus stop required for this, in the condition of approval, was actually the, this would be the Cadillac, when everyone refers to a Cadillac.
That's what I read in the, in the condition. That's what I'm asking.
So this would be a much more improved version of the one that's been discussed at previous.
Oh, it's even a step up?
Correct. So, uh, in the long-range plans for the, for transit, uh, is to establish a bus rapid transit system on Broadway. So, uh, it's a raised platform 16 inches above the drivable surface. The bus doesn't lower, uh, the bus pulls right up to the curb, and you can walk or roll onto the bus. It produces pickup times, drop-off times, uh, makes it a much more efficient process for the transit system. So there's a condition approval in the, for the project. There's also, um, grant funding that the city applied for, uh, through REAP. That's, so there'll be a collaborative effort between the city and the applicant for this transit stop.
Great. Thank you. Are you guys supplying the window coverings for this? How's that going to work? You've got a lot of windows, and the people that are renting these places are certainly not going to be able to do that. Um, is, is that something that's going to be supplied? Uh, I mean, it's a beautiful building, we've got lots of windows, and how, how's that going to work?
That's, that's a fabulous question. I, I, I can't even, I, I, I think it's a great idea, and if that was of concern, I think the applicants would be happy to provide it, so.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be very difficult for the renters to, to do something like that, so. And, and you do have a lot of glass.
Appreciate the advice.
Great. Okay. The, uh, two more items. Uh, the, uh, the lighting that you showed, I don't believe that meets a dark sky requirement. Is that something that, um, that we have to worry about in the city, or, uh, all the other projects, I've been looking at the...
Yeah, no, I, I thought it did, so.
I might be, I might be mistaken.
We, we have a catalog, and we usually, we pick that, so if it doesn't, it absolutely will, will, and we'll try to match that style as close as possible. So the intent is to make dark sky, and that's why it's got the covered top.
And so that's, that, that meets it then, with the top on it?
Usually you can get it with the top on it. The, the, quite, I think what brings up your question is how much on the outside is, is available, and these are lower-level lights, these are pedestrian scale, so it, it's not like, um, it's, it's not creating overall sight lighting, it's just building accent lighting. Um, so their levels aren't as high, so that may be, but are, will, will be required to as a condition, and as we go through plant check, and we'll make sure that it's in that same architectural style. If the one we did show does not meet it, but I think...
I don't know for a fact, it just, to me, it raised a red flag. I've seen a lot of lights, and a lot of them have been turned down lately.
They let me do some design, I don't get to pick every light fixture anymore, so I'll ask staff when I get back.
Okay. Uh, last question. Uh, the trash enclosure is beautiful. It's all open.
Yeah.
We haven't had a lot of luck with open trash container, trash enclosures in town. Um, you're, I, I would suggest that maybe looking at that and thinking about that, and uh, we've, a lot of the trash enclosures that are open, now you can see that they have chain-linked fences around, and people are doing everything they can to close them in. Uh, it, it would be very easy at this point to redesign that, so that a nice closed-in feature that was, um, it has to be fairly stout, actually. People really try to get into these things. Um, that would be my only comment on the trash enclosure, not so much the location or the, uh, the, you know, I'm sure you'll figure out the, the drive approach and all, but the openness of it, uh, it gives me a little pause, so just thought I'd bring that up.
Appreciate the comment.
Uh, that's all from me. Is there anything else from the commissioners?
Chair, one more, one more question. Assuming the project gets approved at City Council, is there any preliminary schedule for construction? And, you know, beyond that, what kind of schedule could be, maybe looked forward to?
There's still construction documents required, engineering, there, there'd still be, be a couple steps before, before construction would break ground, so this, this is not right away, but I, I don't know if applicants maybe want to speak a little bit more about that.
You just roughly, you know, years, or, you know, like, just trying to get a, a view into the future.
Yeah, in a, in a perfect world, I, I think you could see construction start towards the end of this year.
And then, length of construction, any idea at this point?
Oh, to open up a big building and hope it stands up? There's a lot of unknowns there. Uh, this is easily a, a year-long construction project.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to bring it back and open this meeting to the public. We do have a written communication. Dana, uh, who goes first? Do we do Zoom, or do I do my paper here?
Chair Seifert, we can start with in the room, but if you, if you would like to make a comment on this item, if you could please use the raised hand feature in Zoom. Thank you.
So we have one item. Uh, you will have three minutes to speak. Cliff Solomon, when you go up to the desk, please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Cliff Solomon. I live in Orchid, and I do, I am a member of the Methodist Church, and so that's one of the main reasons why I'm here. And I did write all this out, so pardon me. Uh, good evening, Commissioner members, Commission members. My name is Cliff Solomon, and I am a member of the Santa Maria First United Methodist Church. I'd like to address the conversion of the current old Fallus Building into the Heritage Walk Lofts, and how this construction will affect the, that neighborhood and my church. I understand the pressure that the state of California is putting on all California counties, including Santa Barbara County, to build more housing. We need to build more homes, especially in the low to moderate income levels. However, I'm curious how, if these lofts will fit into that classification. I am now even more concerned, because I've heard market rate, so, so they may not fit into what I see, one of the main things that Santa Maria needs, is that, is low to moderate income level housing. I'm also concerned about the impact that the construction will have on the Methodist Church. Will it impact our parking spaces? It sounds like it's going to. Spaces, uh, and, uh, these are spaces that are owned by the city and not by my church. There does seem to be some, some discussion about who owns what parking spaces, and I really do hope that as we have our, our discussion, and I look forward to working with you, that we do figure out which, uh, which parking places go, spaces go with our church, and which do not, because there, it does seem to be confusion about that. And whether we need to have a new survey, it, that does need to be, be looked at. Uh, also, I am curious how this development will affect the current neighborhood. How does it fit in with the businesses that current, currently exist on Main Street? How will it impact Santa Maria's Downtown Fridays? It does sound like it is going to impact an event that is, is very important to the, the entire Santa Maria population. Again, I understand the need to build more housing. I hope that the considerations of the neighborhood surrounding the old Fallus Building and of my church will be kept in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lopez.
Uh, yes, Mr. Cliff Solomon.
Mr. Solomon, I had a question for you. How many parishioners do you have, and how many services do you have?
That's a great question. Um, I believe that we have about 135 people right now. So.
And, and your, your services are just weekends, during the week?
Um, generally, they are on Sundays. Um, we do have some events, uh, throughout the week. Generally, the, those are like meetings. Very rarely, we did, uh, have an event where we had, um, the City Council, uh, uh, people wanting to be on the City Council, and we did have, have them come to the church. So occasionally, we do have other events. Uh, the holiday, um, service, is, the Santa Maria Philharmonic has the, their holiday concert at our church, and so that, that does impact a lot of parking.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
Sure. Any other questions for me?
Any other question, questions for Mr. Solomon?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Dana, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, we do not.
Okay. Uh, would you like to do any rebuttal? Would you like to address that at all? Okay.
Well, I think that we went over, um, the parking, as far as the contractual agreement that's required, and then we have a condition of approval that lays that out in this permit. Um, you know, overall, the goal is obviously to not impact the church, and to not impact the businesses that, um, the, there currently is plenty of parking, and, but there is an overall plan for redevelopment of this area, and so as that occurs, the parking's going to have to be revisited, um, and these contractual agreements would then need to be amended to ensure that there still is adequate parking for all of these uses together. And then Downtown Fridays was mentioned. There will also be opportunities to relocate Downtown Fridays within the, the same area. That hasn't been determined yet, but if it needs to happen, um, there may be a chance where some interior roads could be closed off, similar to what San Luis Obispo does for their Thursday night farmer's market. There's a lot of flexibility within the site to continue to make Downtown Fridays an important event for the community, and that's also a goal that we have with these projects as they move forward.
Thank you very much, Dana. Uh, at this time, I'm going to close the, uh, public hearing, and I'm, well, actually, let's have questions. Do we have any questions, uh, from the commissioners? So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll discuss this item. Commissioners? Or a motion? Go ahead, Mr. Lopez. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the project. I like the architecture. I don't think it needs the tile. It looks like, like an afterthought on the, on the balconies, but I like it. I've liked it since we reviewed it, the downtown specific plan. I know when we had our joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the City Council, there was, it was a little different, but I, I still liked what RRM did with the Fallus Building, so, um, I like it. I just, I don't think we need the, the Spanish tile over the, the balcony railings or balcony walls. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners, this, you would like to? Commissioner Blanco?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I do, I mean, obviously, uh, it's, it would be a huge improvement over the current building, what's there now, um, just an empty, you know, kind of lifeless building. I, frankly, you know, it is a pretty challenging undertaking, I think, and, um, to have a vision to pull off something like this and, and do it, is, is pretty, pretty impressive. So I, I, you know, I was worried for a long time that that building would sit empty for years. Um, what do you do with something like that? And I, I can appreciate the creativity, I think, the thought and the, the vision that is, uh, being brought forward, so I, I really do appreciate that. You know, obviously, I don't want to impact our neighbors, and, um, it sounds like there's some flexibility in the, the plan to be able to accommodate them. Um, you know, parking, you know, is important, but, uh, housing is also really important, so I, I'm excited for the opportunity to revitalize downtown. So in any, any project that comes forward, I think we should definitely be all ears and, and be open-minded to it. I, I, I think the building looks really good. I think the architecture looks, looks great. Um, you know, the creativity, you know, first you think, you know, these, these lofts, you know, they, maybe they're small, but, you know, I, I think there's a point to, hey, people don't want a lot of room, and don't want a lot of maintenance, maybe, and I kind of think it's neat to have 18-foot ceilings is kind of, is something that, it could be pretty cool, um, and, and maybe attracts some of, some young professionals to downtown and, and to our community, I think would be a positive thing. So, um, yeah, I, I, personally, I think, uh, the project is a good project also. Thank you.
Commissioner Mahajir?
Thank you, Chief. Um, I do agree, I do think that we need this type of, um, housing for young professionals within the area, and I do believe it's going to promote the walkability of the whole, um, the whole, um, area regarding the businesses and downtown to support the revitalization, so I, I support it.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Um, I, I think that the architect and the Vernon Group should really pat themselves on the back. This, this really is, it's marvelous. You know, it, it could have been, they could have gone a different direction and created some sort of a lovely Soviet-style block housing, um, which, which has its own design elements. I'm sure somebody loves it somewhere. But, uh, I, I agree with Commissioner Lopez that, uh, the afterthought of the Spanish style, um, tile, I, I don't think is, is truly necessary. Um, I, I had a, um, a bout of COVID, that literally I found out about the day that we were having our joint session, and so I tried to kind of phone in, and the technology wasn't there and whatnot, but, uh, I, I, I would have expressed the opinion, I, I do like contemporary, a more contemporary look, and I think that, uh, given the suggestions that you have more given at that, um, and what you originally planned, I, I think that you've... you originally planned, I think that you've straddled that line very well, and I certainly hope that we see more of that. You know, I think to this, to this particular building, which is referenced quite a bit, and I don't know, does anyone know, when was this building built? Yeah? Dana or Carol?
I have this, oh, so it was constructed in 1988.
No, no. This one?
This building? Oh.
This one.
Disregard.
Where we're in right now, 1905, because, yeah, skip or take.
I'm guessing.
No, you're the chair, so it is 1905.
That's when we.
There you go. So I.
Started as a.
1930. Okay, so I think to, I think to the architects who were given the job to build, build the city hall, and in 1930, they were looking back to designs that they remembered from 50, 60, 80, 100 years prior to that. So we've been living with the style, the Spanish-style, Mediterranean-style for well over 100 years, and so bringing ourselves up to the 1950s might be okay. It might just be okay. So anyway, I like the fact that you have not copied these buildings, that you've got your own feel and flavor, and I totally support that. And then once again, what, I am, I am just amazed at what you guys have done with the phallus building and what your thoughts are. So if there is nobody that cares to do otherwise.
Let me.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, you do. Absolutely.
Microphone. Yeah, so, yeah, I too agree. This is, this is quite a project, and we all had our doubts. You could tell, we all had different, and then you asked us all what we wanted to see, and I told you, no, that's your job. You show us, and we tell you if we like it or not. So I think you're hearing the feedback from that as a pretty positive, pretty positive tonight. I think everyone here has agreed that it's a beautiful building, and it really is going to improve our community as far as what we have. And not only that, we've been talking about the downtown specific plan for a very long time, which you guys are very involved in, and this is actually the first step. We haven't, we've talked and talked and talked, and we've had meetings, and we've looked at different plans and architectures, but this is a real step, and that really means something moving forward. We get to see it in our lifetime, we get to see this thing moving, and we're going to get, really get a vision of what's moving forward, because it is a different vision. It isn't the vision of yesterday, it is a vision of tomorrow. So I commend you on that. And at this time, I would call for a motion.
Chair, I will go ahead and move that the planning commission, by motion, recommend that the city council approve downtown permit DT 2022-0018, Heritage Walk Lofts Downtown Permit at 201 Town Center West.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could we get a roll call vote?
You know what? I prefer a roll call, Kathleen. Can we have that?
There we go.
Commissioner Dickerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Mohajer.
Aye.
Chair Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes. Can't wait to see the building.
Yeah. Congratulations.
And we really hope the walls don't fall down when you, when you do that.
The walls, my, the structure just needs to stay.
I have, I have confidence in you. Thank you. Okay.
Well, I think that we went over the parking as far as the contractual agreement that's required, and then we have a condition of approval that lays that out in this permit. You know, overall, the goal is obviously to not impact the church and to not impact the businesses that, there currently is plenty of parking, but there is an overall plan for redevelopment of this area, and so as that occurs, the parking is going to have to be revisited, and these contractual agreements would then need to be amended to ensure that there still is adequate parking for all of these uses together. And then Downtown Fridays was mentioned. There will also be opportunities to relocate Downtown Fridays within the same area. That hasn't been determined yet, but if it needs to happen, there may be a chance where some interior roads could be closed off, similar to what San Luis Obispo does for their Thursday night farmer's market. There's a lot of flexibility within the site to continue to make Downtown Fridays an important event for the community, and that's also a goal that we have with these projects as they move forward.
Thank you very much, Dana. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm, well, actually, let's have questions. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll discuss this item. Commissioners or a motion? Go ahead, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the project. I like the architecture. I don't think it needs the tile. It looks like an afterthought on the balconies, but I like it. I've liked it since we reviewed it, the downtown specific plan. I know when we had our joint meeting with the planning commission and the city council, there was a little different, but I still liked what RRM did with the phallus building, so I like it. I just, I don't think we need the Spanish tile over the balcony railings or balcony walls. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners who would like to?
Well, yeah. Thank you, Chair. I do, I mean, obviously, it would be a huge improvement over the current building, what's there now, just an empty, you know, kind of lifeless building. Frankly, you know, it is a pretty challenging undertaking, I think, and to have a vision to pull off something like this and do it is pretty impressive. So I, you know, I was worried for a long time that that building would sit empty for years. What do you do with something like that? And I can appreciate the creativity, I think, the thought and the vision that is being brought forward, so I really do appreciate that. You know, obviously, I don't want to impact our neighbors, and it sounds like there's some flexibility in the plan to be able to accommodate them. You know, parking, you know, is important, but housing is also really important, so I'm excited for the opportunity to revitalize downtown. So in any project that comes forward, I think we should definitely be all ears and be open-minded to it. I think the building looks really good. I think the architecture looks, looks great. You know, the creativity, you know, first you think, you know, these lofts, you know, maybe they're small, but, you know, I think there's a point to, hey, people don't want a lot of room and don't want a lot of maintenance, maybe, and I kind of think it's neat to have 18-foot ceilings is kind of something that could be pretty cool and maybe attracts some young professionals to downtown and to our community, I think would be a positive thing. So, yeah, I personally, I think the project is a good project also. Thank you.
Commissioner Mohajer.
Thank you, Chief. I do agree, I do think that we need this type of housing for young professionals within the area, and I do believe it's going to promote the walkability of the whole, the whole area regarding the businesses and downtown to support the revitalization, so I support it.
Commissioner Dickerson.
I think that the architect and the Vernon Group should really pat themselves on the back. This really is, it's marvelous. You know, it could have been, they could have gone a different direction and created some sort of a lovely Soviet-style block housing, which has its own design elements. I'm sure somebody loves it somewhere. But I agree with Commissioner Lopez that the afterthought of the Spanish tile, I don't think is truly necessary. I had a bout of COVID, literally, I found out about the day that we were having our joint session, and so I tried to kind of phone in, and the technology wasn't there and whatnot, but I would have expressed the opinion, I do like contemporary, a more contemporary look, and I think that, given the suggestions that you have more given at that and what you originally planned, I think that you've straddled that line very well, and I certainly hope that we see more of that. You know, I think to this, to this particular building, which is referenced quite a bit, and I don't know, does anyone know, when was this building built? Yeah? Dana or Carol?
I have this, oh, so it was constructed in 1988.
No, no. This one?
This building? Oh.
This one.
Disregard.
Where we're in right now, 1905, because, yeah, skip or take.
I'm guessing.
No, you're the chair, so it is 1905.
Well, that's when we.
There you go. So I.
Started as a.
1930. Okay, so I think to, I think to the architects who were given the job to build, build the city hall, and in 1930, they were looking back to designs that they remembered from 50, 60, 80, 100 years prior to that. So we've been living with the style, the Spanish-style, Mediterranean-style for well over 100 years, and so bringing ourselves up to the 1950s might be okay. It might just be okay. So anyway, I like the fact that you have not copied these buildings, that you've got your own feel and flavor, and I totally support that. And then once again, what, I am, I am just amazed at what you guys have done with the phallus building and what your thoughts are. So if there is nobody that cares to do otherwise.
Let me.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, you do. Absolutely.
Microphone. Yeah, so, yeah, I too agree. This is, this is quite a project, and we all had our doubts. You could tell, we all had different, and then you asked us all what we wanted to see, and I told you, no, that's your job. You show us, and we tell you if we like it or not. So I think you're hearing the feedback from that as a pretty positive, pretty positive tonight. I think everyone here has agreed that it's a beautiful building, and it really is going to improve our community as far as what we have. And not only that, we've been talking about the downtown specific plan for a very long time, which you guys are very involved in, and this is actually the first step. We haven't, we've talked and talked and talked, and we've had meetings, and we've looked at different plans and architectures, but this is a real step, and that really means something moving forward. We get to see it in our lifetime, we get to see this thing moving, and we're going to get, really get a vision of what's moving forward, because it is a different vision. It isn't the vision of yesterday, it is a vision of tomorrow. So I commend you on that. And at this time, I would call for a motion.
Chair, I will go ahead and move that the planning commission, by motion, recommend that the city council approve downtown permit DT 2022-0018, Heritage Walk Lofts Downtown Permit at 201 Town Center West.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could we get a roll call vote?
You know what? I prefer a roll call, Kathleen. Can we have that? Permit at 611 South Broadway.
There we go.
Commissioner Dickerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco.
Thank you. Aye.
Can we have a staff presentation?
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Mohajer.
Aye.
Yes.
Chair Seifert.
Thank you, Chair Seifert, members of the commission.
Aye. Motion passes.
Good evening.
Can't wait to see the building.
My name is Cody Graybell. I'm a senior planner with the city, and I'll be presenting Spirit Gasoline Plan Development
Yeah. Congratulations.
And we really hope the walls don't fall down when you, when you do that.
Permit, proposing to remove and replace a fuel canopy at 1611 South Broadway.
The walls, my, the structure just needs to stay.
I have, I have confidence in you. Thank you.
So the project is generally in the center of the city, and it is between, excuse me,
Okay.
it's at the intersection of West Battles Road and South Broadway. So here's West Battles Road, and then here's South Broadway, and to the north of the site is a fast food restaurant, and then to the south and to the west of the site is parking area for a shopping center, and then to the east of the site across South Broadway is a motel. So the site is Zoned PDC2, which is Plan Development General Commercial zoning, and it's surrounded by commercial zoning as well, and the site is half an acre in size. So the planning commission actually reviewed and approved a plan development permit back in 1966, which established a service station and a fueling canopy, and in 2007, Spirit Gasoline submitted building permits to the city to establish the current use of the gas station and the convenience store. So all the existing buildings would remain. It really would just be this fuel canopy here is going to be demolished and then rebuilt to be a little bit larger for stormwater compliance. And then landscape rehabilitation is also going to occur throughout the site, and that is a condition of approval, specifically number five. And then also, the existing light standards in the parking lot are going to be replaced, and that's condition of approval number six. So this is a view of the site currently as it exists, if you're on South Broadway looking And then this is the site plan, so as proposed, it's relatively straightforward tonight, just replacing the fueling canopy and then landscape rehabilitation, as well as replacing the parking lot light standards, as discussed before. And the landscape rehabilitation will include removing some of the older plant material and replacing it with some drought-tolerant materials. There are eight trees that are proposed to be removed, and five trees will be planted in place. Staff does support this tree disposition plan, because six of the eight trees removed are actually palm trees, which aren't preferred in the city due to the lack of the canopy and screening provided. And then these red Xs on the screen are the approximate location of the parking lot light standards that would be removed and replaced. So the canopy would be 18 feet tall, shown here and here, and all of the materials that are proposed are compatible with the existing convenience store. So the canopy itself would be made of steel material, and it would be painted gray, and then the roof itself would be concrete tile, which would match the convenience store, and then the paint colors, the terracotta and gray, again, are just pulling elements from the convenience store. And then lastly, there is brick veneer at the base of the column that's being implemented into the canopy, which is also currently on the convenience store itself. And then there is some light standards that are being replaced, as I've mentioned a few times, and those are shown here, and they'd be approximately 20 feet tall. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission, by motion, approve PD 2022-0002, and staff and the applicant are now available for questions. Thank you.
Do we have any expertise from the commissioners? I have none either. Can, any questions for us? Go ahead, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, and this is, it's interesting that you brought up dark sky requirements for the lighting on that, on that last project, because that was one of my questions for this project. I know that on the plan set, the lighting's called out on the very last set, on the very last sheet, I should say. I tried to look up and see if it was a dark sky requirement, because it seems like all over town, everybody's just putting up massive LEDs that shine on all the neighbors. I mean, it's, I don't know if, I know it's not in our municipal ordinance that we have to have dark sky, or it's not, right?
So the city has, I think, standard requirements for lighting. In planning, we do, as far as the pedestrian-scale lighting, we do want it to be dark sky compliant, and we condition it that there's a photometric plan that gets submitted, and we review that. I think maybe the difference is, though, like parking lot lighting might come under a different standard, and I don't have that information in front of me, but I'm not sure if you're talking about parking lot lighting.
Right. Right. Because even when you're driving down the street and you look at that light, I mean, it's, it's very, very strong. And so that was one of the questions that I had, whether or not we can condition that to have those type of lights. And then my second one, and I remember bringing this up when we did the gas station on West Main, it was, and I don't know if we can do this or not, put a condition where the hose is long enough to fuel on either side, because people wait and stack within the small parking areas, and Costco, they do it right over there. So my question is, can we put a condition of having the length of hose to reach both sides of the, of the car?
Yeah, so with this project, it only includes the canopy. It's not making any changes to the pump stations or the fueling stations, so I would think
And then it would be approximately 80 feet from the elementary school. And staff does want to note that the Planning Commission did approve another facility for T-Mobile. It's a 78-foot monopole sports light field co-location product at the site in 2017, and that's shown here in the circled location. So the site is zoned open space and it's surrounded by residential and public facility zoning. And the park itself is eight acres in size. And the facility would be at the southwestern corner of the soccer field, which is shown here. And there's two different components. There's the monopole facility and then there's also some ancillary equipment that would be enclosed behind a chain link fence. So the ancillary equipment's on the left here and then the monopole would be on the right. And one thing that staff wants to note is there is an existing stadium pole that also would be removed. And this project would be built approximately 25 feet away from that, that light. So there is a need for Dish Wireless facilities in the city. This exhibit here shows generally in this portion of the city, the different facilities that staff's permitted. So we have a fair amount of Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile facilities, which are the red, green, and blue dots and diamonds shown on the screen, but there are no Dish Wireless facilities within the, the project area. So this is a view from North Railroad Avenue, if you're looking northeast. And here, I'm just pointing out the pole that would be replaced, as mentioned earlier. So this is an existing 70-foot tall pole that's used for, you know, sports lighting, mainly for the soccer field. And in its place would be the 88-foot tall facility. And staff did request that the applicant analyze the ability to co-locate on any of the proposed, excuse me, the existing poles or the T-Mobile facility that's shown in the middle of the screen. And they looked closely at that feasibility and determined that it wasn't possible for a couple reasons. The first is that the required height that they need to reach and provide adequate coverage can't be provided on any of the poles in the park. And also structurally, it'd be very difficult to extend any of the poles in order to provide the height needed to reach the coverage levels. And we're going to look at some coverage maps that are going to help kind of clarify what I'm speaking about. So this here is a coverage map. The applicant provided if co-location occurred below the existing antennas on the T-Mobile monopole. And the green areas represent strong service levels. So this would be the type of service where you could utilize Dish Wireless inside. And then the orange shaded areas are representative of medium service levels. So it's where you could receive the service like in a car. So based upon co-locating at 55 feet, which is the highest level T-Mobile could provide on the existing facility, Dish would reach about 9,500 users. And on the next slide, we'll see at 85 feet, the population levels essentially tripled to 30,000 users. So that's some of the analysis the applicant provided and why co-location wasn't possible. So we're going to look at the plans briefly next. The lease area is shown here in this dash location. And there are some trees and shrubs that would be planted adjacent to North Railroad that aren't shown on the plans now, but they are a condition of approval. And it would help screen the facility a little better. There also are four Chinese elm trees that are distributed along the south boundary of the site. And those are shown in the green areas. And then there are four street trees that would be conditioned, which are these brown circles along Railroad Avenue. And the city's asking for California live oak. And here's just a closer view of the equipment. So on the far right is the 70-foot sports light pole we've seen a couple times. And 25 feet over is where the monopole would be constructed in place of the stadium light. And then on the left here is the ancillary equipment shelter that would be enclosed with an eight-foot chain link fence. So these are the west and south elevations for the monopole. And on the left is the west elevation and the right is the south elevation. And the applicant explained that the north and the east elevations would be mirror images essentially. So we just have these two today to look at. And the lighting that would be co-located is consistent with the prior stadium light that would be removed. It's at 70 feet and that meets the city's Parks and Rec standards. And then the antennas themselves would be at 85 feet, located above the stadium lights. And then down here, we can see there's the ancillary equipment that would be enclosed in the chain link fence shown on the left and right here. And that's an eight-feet-tall chain link fence that would provide privacy slats. So there's a couple photo simulations the applicant's provided. This is, if you were looking southeast from the sidewalk on Railroad Avenue. And in the background here is the facility. And then on the left is the stadium light that's existing that would be removed. And then this would be facing south, if you were essentially at the T-Mobile site that we've seen a couple times. Again, on the left is the existing stadium light and then the right would be the replacement facility. And then lastly, here is a perspective from the residential neighborhoods to the west. And here's the existing stadium light. And then on the right, we have the proposed monopole. So the project does meet the city's administrative guidelines for wireless telecommunications facilities, specifically because co-location is proposed with stadium lighting provided. And staff did determine that this is the least obtrusive design to the skyline based upon the number of poles in the park, as well as some of the PG&E towers in the area. We felt this was more appropriate compared to a monopine or a monoeucalyptus. And we do, we have determined that adequate screening has been provided of the equipment enclosure and conditions of approval are in place to ensure that. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, by motion, approve U 2022-0010. And that concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cody. Do we have any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cody, why does a equipment fence need to be eight feet?
Commissioner Lopez, I would have to look at the plans. Part of it, I believe, is screening and another part may be for security purposes.
The equipment's five one.
I'm sorry, do you mind repeating that?
The equipment's only five foot, one inch tall. There's like a little extension, maybe 18 inches, but it's eight foot. I mean, that's, that's, that's a huge fence.
Yeah, it may be partially for security purposes. I believe the applicant is in attendance on Zoom, so they may be able to provide a little more insight.
And then my other question was, so the city is leasing both the footprint of the pole and the equipment? Footprint of the equipment area? I think you showed us some lease areas.
So the lease areas are typically for the actual provider, for Dish Wireless. They have lease areas that they, you know, have those screened, screened off equipment areas essentially. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I was just curious, does the city benefit from, from that, leasing out that area or is it just an area that?
Well, I'm looking at Director Posada, actually, to see if he might be able to provide a little more information about. Because this is, this is in a park. It's in a, in a public park. And I think maybe he could help with that. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much, Dana. So I didn't come here for this item, but hey, it's great I'm here. So the city does receive revenue from the lease. And I believe Cody had a footprint of the lease. So in, normally what the lease would include is the entire footprint. But in this particular project, there is an area for the pole. And then there's an area for the equipment. The eight foot, I didn't know was an eight-foot fence. That's my first hearing of the height. I didn't hear that. Our existing fence around the soccer field is six foot. So it may make sense to have a six foot around there. The other thing they might be trying to avoid, because I don't believe it's allowed, is the bobbed wire concept around the top. So the eight foot is probably just for security. But yes, to answer your question, yes, the city does get ground lease for those, revenue from those kinds of projects. And the way the general fund is set up right now is those go back to the park for use at the park.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dana, do we have anyone from the public on Zoom? Or I don't see anyone in the room?
We just have the applicant on Zoom, Mr. Ambrose. He may be able to address the question regarding the need for it to be eight feet in, in height. So Mr. Ambrose, if you would like to speak on that, please raise your hand. Okay, he does have his hand raised.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, you are, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jerry Ambrose. I'm here on behalf of Dish. The eight feet height is just something that we, we use as a standard height. Actually, most cities and counties ask us to make them eight feet high. But if the city preferred six feet, that wouldn't matter to us. We could work with that as well. There is, I guess at eight feet, there is a perceived security, a perceived higher level of security. But again, either way would work for us. And I didn't have anything else to add to staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I will close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the commission. Do we have any discussion or a motion? Hearing nothing?
Well, I was just going to say, I, you know, if Commissioner Lopez feels strongly about the six feet, then is that something we want to consider and modify it or are we okay with eight feet?
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine either way. I was just wondering why it was eight foot. I mean, that's a very large fence. High fence, I should say. I'm okay either way. I was just wondering why it was so high.
Mr. Posada, do you have something to add?
Commissioners, thank you again, Chairman Seifert. I think for consistency purposes, you know, it would be nice to keep it at six feet. It would keep in line with the fencing that we already have installed around the, the sports area.
Thank you very much.
In that case, if I may, I'll make a motion. Chair?
Very good, thank you.
I move that we approve Conditional Use Permit U 2022-0010 with the modification that the fence height be set at six feet.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mohajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
I'll abstain.
Chair Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Posada? Okay, at this time, it's time for all reports from commission and staff. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Seifert and Commissioners. So I'll just go over our upcoming schedule and then there's a few updates I have as well on projects and some other things. So we're meeting, we're scheduled to meet tomorrow at 1:30 PM at Shepherd Hall and, for a study session. And staff's going to be, actually I and Assistant City Attorney Widdam will be giving you an update on all of the new and exciting housing laws that went into effect in 2023, as well as SB 9, which actually went into effect in 2022. So we're prepared to do that and should be an interesting discussion. And then the hearing on March 1st and the study session on March 2nd, we actually don't have any items that are going to be ready for those dates. So we would be canceling those two dates. And then March 15th, we have a hearing that's scheduled and so we have items that will be ready to go that day. And then we also have the, the March 16th study session. We don't have any items yet, but I don't want to cancel it just yet in case something comes up. And then just for some other updates, so the Vetaravia Plaza, also Vetaravia Place Apartments, they went to the, that was reviewed by the city council on February 7th and was approved. And the ordinance is going to go back for a second reading on, next week, on February 21st. And then one other item I wanted to mention is that there is a Planning Commission Academy that's coming up. I did send an email out to all of you about it. It's March 29th to the 31st. And it looks like it's going to be a really interesting academy. There's a lot of really great sessions that focus on the new housing legislature, some sequel law, some other things just related to being a planning commissioner that looked really interesting. So if any of you would like to go to that, please let me know and I can help get you registered for that.
Where is that?
It's in Garden Grove and it's being put on by Cal Cities. And Commissioner Mohajer is going, going to be attending. I'm also going to be attending. So yeah, there's an opportunity for networking as well.
Dana, I've been invited to a PC training in San Luis Obispo on Friday. You know anything about that?
Well, I do know that there are some local trainings that are happening. I think there's one in Santa Barbara and maybe the one in, in San Luis Obispo as well. I didn't send that invitation out, but I, I was aware of that. This is a little bit of a different type of situation that it's like three days long and there's different sessions each day. It's, it's almost similar to like the APA conference that we go to, that planners go to and attend each year. And then I also just wanted to, again, just welcome our new Commissioner, Yasmin Mohajer. Thank you so much for joining us and I know it's going to be great working with you. So thanks so much. And yeah, that's the update that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Commissioners, any reports?
I just want to make sure you're not going to a time share by accident. Are you giving you lunch?
I'm a little concerned at this point because I did plan on spending most of the day there and I, I am very busy at work right now. So I'm, I'm going to be reviewing that email. I have a, a small report. The CDBG Commission is moving through the deliberations. We meet again tomorrow night to finalize the grants. We've already met Monday night via Zoom and we met with all the applicants. I attended a, what was it, the Regional Housing Element today with Congressman Carbajal put it on. We had quite a, quite a good attendance. It was actually a very interesting conversation. Yeah, I was glad I went. That was it for me. That was at the Dick Dewey's Center in Lompoc. And it was actually pretty interesting until I got back to my office and I was told that the back of my pants were ripped. So it's a good, it's a good day to meet the congressman. Yes. Only me. If I hear nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.